All the same rules that we always have. If you want to be, want to say something and you're on, go to meeting, please turn your camera on and then we'll be all that way. Please state your name, your address of your residence, and we'll keep it at three minutes. I will start out with a statement that will kind of cover some questions that came in earlier, and we'll get those covered. Once again, let's, let's everybody treat everyone with respect. We've had some problems before, but let's just keep that in mind that we'll treat everybody with respect, let them have their say, and we'll move on. So, to start, there have been some petitions gone around. There was a petition asking council to withhold their vote on the budget, and I appreciate all the time that has gone into the petition for their ballot. The Montana law does not allow for officious tips or referendums against several financial matters of the city council. The annual budget is one of these. I spoke with Darla, the financial reporting manager of the state of administration. The city attorney reviewed the law provided by Darla and agrees that an initiative referendum is not allowed on any annual budgets. There has also been, this provided by individuals who supported the RLPD in the city's budget. That list was compiled through change.org and will be treated the same way as the above petition. This has been a great experience in having citizens become interested and involved in our local government and the process of entry operation. Thank you both groups for your time and effort spent in collecting signatures. We have 13 questions we need to go over that were sent in to us, and we're going to get those done and out of the way because it may be answering some of the questions that you already have in mind. There was one question that had to do with the website. Each department within the city will have their homepage, many post-information such as annual reports. Until then, it is my understanding that Carbon County News will be posting the monthly report on Chief Wells' monthly police report and activity report. When we get the new website up and running, Chief Wells will post it on there. You can access each report he has presented to the council in the packets and information that is now online. It would be on the supplemental documents for council meetings. You can also request that information from Lonnie, the city clerk, if you have trouble finding that. That would give you two years of data that you can review and compare. They talked about pay make-matrix. It was sent to council. The pay matrix was set up years ago with the cost of living raised figured into it. City employee job description coincides with the grade and the. If people couldn't mute their mics, we'd appreciate it. A question came up about the desks and chairs for the police department. They will not be paid for out of the resort tax. The recent, there was also a question about the recent donations to the police nonprofit that is managed by the Red Lodge Community Foundation, and those funds do not come to the city. Those are for the police department and they're funded, they're coffee with the cops and things like that. So that money is not it. The city is required to provide the employees with a suitable and safe work environment, and that's why we are replacing those because they're being held up with phone books and things, other things. Also, to kind of clarify that, the desks are being purchased from the Montana Department of Corrections. The inmates make the desks of solid wood and at an excellent price. We could not purchase this quality of desks for the price from a vendor. The council table and chairs that are all in here, those, that is where we got those from, they make very good and they last a very long time. So, that's why we are replacing those. Law enforcement and other agency services are part of the resort tax language. This was a question about the police car's lease being paid out of the resort tax. And so, that was written into the resort tax language when it was amended many years ago. This practice has been done several different times. We've also got cloud trucks out of the whole thing, back trucks, so this falls into that same category. And that's where that is. The resort tax that was recently amended by a large majority of the voters in Red Lodge included continued capital improvements with the same language approved in the 1990s for this. And as I said, these are a lease, I believe it is the last year of this lease. And we'll also move on to a question that was about the resort tax and how it wasn't being spent as it came out of the committee. And yes, we are spending on parks, we're spending it on streets. And so that pretty much takes it. The resort tax committee worked hard over the past years to find ways to utilize resort tax to the benefit of areas that were most needed. The community input was important and considered by the resort tax committee. Ultimately, the resort tax committee determined the most important needs of the ballot language was approved by the voters of this area. This also eases the cost burden from the city's general fund. A question that came up about, we should start on the budget for the next year right now. And what we normally do, we have a timeline that's available in the back of the room. This was also in the packets and online. You could look at that and see what that timeline was. We started February, began the process during February and March of this year. I worked with department heads and city council representative on their individual department budgets. Three meetings were held in February and March. During April, city hall was closed due to COVID. On May 12th, the city, the council members received an email, by email, the working budget from Dave Westwood, who is the council president. During that time, that's a, that's a working budget, so it is changing all the time as we review that and we change things. So, one of the concerns was that that budget, when we post it, it, then we, you know, we'll work on it tomorrow and it will change. And that's, that's the budget. And so, we normally start that January, February. We have our meetings and then work from there. As you look at this timeline, you'll be able to see exactly what those meetings were about and, and who was there. We try to have a council rep at each one of them. They were all, they were invited. And please look at that, that gives you an idea what that timeline is. June 4th, 2020, council members received by email the updated work budget from Dave Westwood during these times. It is a budget in process and not finalized. July 7th, 2020, the first budget work session was held. Notice of this work session was posted to them, and the public was welcome to participate. On July 23rd, 2020, the second budget work session was held. It was noticed and the public was welcome. August 13th was the third and final work session. It was posted, public was welcome to participate. Today, the public hearing requires by Montana law and a vote for final approval. This information has been available to council members since May 12th. When you have questions about the budget, the best method is to contact your council person. We've been inundated with people sending us things. And please, go through your council representative. They're the one that are representing you in your wards. The city is always available, happy to answer questions, but we do have other duties here too. So, if you do have a question and you wish for us to answer that, we have other duties and you won't get a real prompt response because we have to get things finished and, and then go ahead and research what you're looking for. Hopefully, your council representatives will bring your questions or issues to the council table, would attend any of the department head meetings. In 2018, I appointed each council member a specific department head. At that time, they were so, to work with that department head, to help with the budget process and to help that department head get carried forward resolutions and ordinances to help that department and to help the city move forward. And we will continue to do it that way. And please, you know, council representatives, please contact and stay in contact with your department heads so we can get those things accomplished. Once we got, we get to a certain point in the budget process where we're sitting waiting to see what our mills are. The mills must be, once we get the mills, then we can go ahead and get to this point where we're reviewing the budget and hopefully ratifying it. The mill must be passed tonight as it is required by state and must be to the state within a certain period of time. The budget of the 2020, 2021 is balanced with additional monies left over. It is the first time that this has happened in a very long time. There is no reason not to approve this budget. There is a law that went into effect on May 2nd, 2019 regarding a council's failure to pass the annual budget. Rebecca is looking into that, and I do not know the specifics, but I hope this will not be an issue as the budget is balanced and ready for approval. Currently, the way our city budget work is structured, the general fund is the only fund from which the police department can be funded. There has been a lot of comparisons to other cities in Montana, even Phoenix, and these are not fair comparisons. If you attended the, the meeting that we had where the department heads explained their budget, I think Chief Wells did a very good job of explaining how he compares his department to other ones, and this really comes down to a total of what it costs per officer. And I think if you narrow that down and you look at that, you would definitely see where we sat in that. Currently, our city budget, let's see, skip that one. Without a, without a special interest district, the entire police department must be paid from the general fund. The cities were to enact a special district for law enforcement, then the police department could be paid with those special district funds as well. The budget during the, our time is an ever-changing process until the mills come in and we can finalize the numbers. The council has had a copy of the working budget since May 12th, 2020. Each month, the council is provided with monthly expenditures of the city. This information is also available on the city's website. There, and it's there for public viewing. If a person has a question about expenditures, speak to your council representative about it. Express your disfavor or your approval of expenditures to your council representative. These, these expenditures are signed by two council representatives, and they're all totally reviewed at that time. We do not start the process late. Other municipalities start later than we do, some of them start before we do. When I became mayor, I started meeting with the department heads in February to work on the budget. Also during the year, I hold department head meetings almost every month. That's when we review expenditures, how the budget's going, and we review that to make sure that that's going along fine. So we, we monitor that all the time. All department heads are present, and we talk about the budget, expenditures for the department, updates on activity for that department. Like I said, talking about the timeline again, that is available at the back of the room, on the podium back there. And you can please, please look at that and you can see what we actually did as we were going through that budget process. There's a question about public comments being held at three minutes. We hold the public comments to three minutes so that everybody has an opportunity to speak. And this has been the process for years now, and it seems to work out well. As you notice, we have a light up on the wall, it's red light, green light. Gives you three minutes to talk. When it hits red, that's, that's time to finish your statement and go ahead and sit down. There's some comments about the collective bargaining agreement with the police department. We're really not talking about that tonight, we're talking about the budget. The, the numbers that were, have been talked about through the negotiation are in the budget. They're into the salaries. Expecting to, if that does get ratified here, that those numbers are already in there and it's not going to give us any shock of any new numbers coming in. At the, once again, at the beginning of the public comments, I ask people to state their name and residential address. Speakers forget to do that sometimes. I try to interrupt them and tell, have that brought forward so we can do that. Also during these times when we have go-to meeting, if you're going to get on the chat side of that, would you please do the same? State your name, state your residence address. And like I say, when you're ready, if you're ready to speak and you're, you're on the go-to meeting, please go ahead and just show your picture. Dave, I, you have yours on all the time, just, and you like to do before, just go ahead and wave your hand. I'm just about done, folks. There, you know, and I don't even think I'm going to get into this. There's been some talk about the police budget being 42% of the general fund. And I already explained that to you, they are paid out of the general fund. Now, this number is brought up in a way to, to make it look like they have a lot of the budget, but actually, when you boil down to it, it's only 11% of the total budget. It was brought up, people wanted some statistics on the police department budget for the last 10 years. We would be more than happy to, to get into and get some kind of a report for the last two years. Since Chief Wells and I have only been here that long, I think we can get those through those police monthly reports, and we can do that. I think that's the end of my statement. I hope that cleared up some things so that we can move along with this. We have some people in the audience here. We'll open that up for the public hearing right now. This is the public hearing. Comments from the public on the 2020, 2021 budget? Yes, sir?
My name is Jeff Ham, I reside at Orbridge Road. Disclosure number one, that is outside the city limits. Disclosure number two, it's a second home for us. We are not Montana residents, at least not yet. But I've lived here the last two years, half-time, and I do feel this is our second home and part of the community investment. I'm also the individual who several weeks ago sent you a copy of a letter to the editor that I can regarding the behavior, distributing behavior of a law enforcement agency at Bear Tooth Motorcycle Rally. And that was not the Red Lodge Police Department, as you know. I'm here simply this evening to advocate for an increase to the police budget, specifically in the training line item. I'm not used to talking this much in this thing, I know. And that over the course of 2021, you program additional training in the areas of cultural diversity, community policing, and conflict resolution from the surplus funds that you have. And over the course of that, did you take advantage of the social service agencies that you have here to assist them in that training? For example, DSBS, I think they've been available in the past, and you haven't taken advantage of them. It would be naive for us to assume that the social ideals facing the nation are not present here in Red Lodge. And I'm a firm believer in giving our law enforcement officers all the tools to be successful and to build public trust and to improve public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Wells, do you want to speak on that? Because we talked about that, that you already have that worked into your budget.
Yes, sir, thank you for bringing it up. The training that we have is actually very important. One of the things that we have as police officers, we have to have full-certified training, meaning that it has to be certified by post and there's been training that they approve of. And so, we've always looked for training. And one of the things is that with training is there's a budget issue, which means that we have to pay for overtime and other additional things to make the budget pay for the training. Well, someone's a trainee, we then have to pay someone to cover their shift if they're there. So, one of the things that I look at is trying to find the most reasonable and true training that we can. And I would come up with a system, which is a police academy, one of the Police One Academy. It's online training, but it's also full-certified training. And they have all the training that you mentioned earlier in community diversity, you know, community-oriented policing, crisis intervention-type training. All that is available to our officers, and I'm able to do that on duty to where I don't have to pay overtime, and I can do that through the internet. So, we are looking, I am looking at other ways that we can provide additional training that meets the state recommendations as well as providing additional training for officers. Our officers who want training, they're always asking for training, but it's a budgetary issue, and we're trying to be very frugal with our budget. And that's one of the things that we have done, is make sure that we stay within our budget and, and still try to provide as much training as possible.
You bet. More comments on the 2020, 2021 budget? Joe Chuck?
Not any. Jael, earlier, but this is when you were reading your things. She said this is really appreciated, thank you for this overview, for addressing public concerns and sharing more of the background. And then she commented about his comment about DSBS and training. Jen Battles, 709 Hagan. I just want to highlight that there are additional people trying to get on the link and can't get in. This has happened more than once. That's a technical thing, I don't know.
It's there, there's a lot of people in here. Public comments?
Dave did earlier when you were reading those. He asked if we can read the questions that you were responding to rather than assuming all listening now?
I did not bring those.
I don't have them.
I don't know that I have up here. Do you have that? Okay. All right, these were the questions that I answered, having to do with the budget.
Oh, sorry. So Dave put in blue with time machine, can we just get Jen to confirm all the addressed? We'll post the questions online.
Yes, we will.
So, if Jen wants to, like Dave said, confirm that her questions were answered.
Okay.
And just to clarify, those questions were online in the, in the meeting notes. There was a split between the meeting and the budget. Some were there, but they already are online.
Okay, I couldn't remember, there was a lot, so.
I, you know, some of the questions that I didn't answer had to do with collective bargaining. There was some question about why in the collective bargaining are they going to get paid if they happen to get COVID? And, you know, that all has to do with sick time and their job.
Okay, Jael Campy, 9 Heinrich Road. Thank you, Chief Wells, for that statement and commitment to training. Another benefit of partnering, partnering, partnering with DSBS, it is builds relationships that are vital. If there is any way to prioritize, that would, that would be great, especially as it builds relationships with other public safety partners who are part of the community that collectively serve for our public safety.
Thank you. Public comments on the budget?
This is just another petition that was given to me this morning.
Okay. Any more comments on the budget? Yes, Jael?
Sorry, I, it's hard to type fast enough to get comments, and so I reverted to this. On, Chief Wells, I would love to hear more about your, either your strategy. And Bill, you've addressed this in the past, which I've really appreciated in terms of talking about building a relationship or strengthening a relationship with DSBS. Last meeting, Chief Wells, and I really appreciate this, you handed out your, you had physical copies of your monthly, a data of how your time is spent, which is great information. And I had sent you an email asking, sort of following up about a conversation Tom and I had, asking if that potentially could get published in the paper. I'd love to hear what you thought about it. Also, asking if you could do a further breakdown so that we can see the line items between, I want to say it's public, it's services rendered, which is where I think domestic violence and dispute falls. And the reason I'm interested in all of this is we start to get to see, like, how time is being spent and how, like, what training is most needed. And just by that July, which I know is a snapshot, and it may not be normal, I have no idea. The domestic, that area around domestic disputes, I think, is about 20 to 25% of time, all of which sort of affirms statements that have been made in the past about wanting to strengthen that relationship. So my question relates to, what, what are your goals in terms of that relationship going forward? It's been talked about a little bit. And what do you think you could do to try and get that great report either published or on the website regularly? And have you thought about it? But it was an email I sent to you, Chief, if you could respond.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just respond to that, that.
Thanks, Bill.
During, under the crunch of where we're at now in the budget system, we just simply didn't have time to get any reporting like that done. I do recognize that there are a lot of people out there that would like to see more statistics on that. Alistair is here, I hope Alistair is going to publish that in the paper, and he's nodding his head yes. You know, we can actually put out, you know, kind of a index that says, you know, what each one of those specific areas is and what that means. And like I said, there's two years of that data that are on the website just under the council meetings that have the police report that are pretty easy to access and compare those two in the meantime. Thank you, Jael.
Yeah, thank you.
Jen Battles, 709 Hagan. My questions were not accurately summarized or answered. I submitted them ahead of time, specifically after your instructions had been given. And by email ahead of time, do any of your council members have any response for me?
I guess not, Deputy S. Right, and that, this has to do with the questions that she, that she sent you.
Why, I noticed the petition over here follows along that same guideline, and they're asking not, for us not to sign the budget tonight until those questions are answered.
And as we stated, they cannot petition against the general, the budget.
Okay. Okay. But we can or cannot vote, we have the choice of voting for or against it.
You certainly do, right?
Thank you.
You know, I, I think that when we went through all these questions and all of us together got together to answer those, and like I say, some of those, I, you know, as far as collective bargaining and things like that, I'm not going to get into that during the budget hearing. I think we did a good job of answering those. I'm sorry that it doesn't, doesn't meet your satisfaction, but I think we did a very good job of answering the ones that were pertinent to having to do with the budget. Any other comments?
I agree with you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Dave, I asked, I'm assuming he's asking Jen, can we please articulate what questions were not answered?
Comments on the 2020, 21 budget?
You said, I'd like to see the city, like to, like the city to have a chance to respond to any issue feels we're not responded to, not asking that it be answers everyone like. we're not responded to, not asking that it be answers everyone like.
More comments on the 2020, 21 budget? Jael, one more time. Grab your mic off.
Um, I'm doing it on the phone. I can't quite figure it out. Uh, I wanted to have clarification on the pay matrix. And the reason why it's relevant to the budget is because it's my understanding, and I, you know, if I'm, if I, my understanding is wrong, please, by all means, please correct me, is that it, because the collective bargaining agreement is a three-year document, we in essence are, when we approve, the, that it has budgetary implications for this budget. And so the, when we approve it in the budget, the, the two are connected. And so you had said that it had been shared or that it's reflected within the budget. But is it shared? How does that work? Does, is it shared as a separate document? Um, and how, how do you review it knowing that it, that it has this longer-term implication? And maybe you could, and this may be a, a question for both you and the chief, could you describe a little bit of what that process and that relationship looks like and when the council received that information?
So the, the collective bargaining agreement, uh, in its negotiations right now has, uh, one person represents, representing the city, and then we have Tom Lyman, who is the council representative on that, doing the negotiations with, uh, police officer and their union, uh, representative. As I said, that, that, that increase in wages for the beginning officers has already worked into our wages and will continue to work, we've, that, done that way. Uh, once we work it in there, then, uh, Lonnie does her work as far as the next budget, working that into the wages with the, also with the increase from the pay matrix. Do you, can you explain the pay matrix a little better, Lonnie?
Okay, so, uh, that's in the union contract, the union's form with the public works and the police department. Um, the city hired Ken Meager, um, and he worked with, uh, Montana State University, and he developed the pay matrix. And every year, the cost of living is figured into this pay matrix. And it's not just the police department that uses the pay matrix. Um, all the employees, uh, with the exception of the public works director and myself that are under contract, um, fall under this pay matrix. So it's not just, um, the, the police department. And any union states and the other union contracts that the city will follow by the pay matrix. When it does change, they have to go back to ten as well. Um, and each, each employee has, um, uh, job descriptions. And those job descriptions are tied to their grade and step that is reflected in that pay matrix. It's much simpler knowing, going into the budget cycle, once we get the COLA, which is in February, um, I can plug that into the pay matrix, and then I can, um, start on the wages. I get insurance increases and stuff, um, and usually April, then that gets plugged into the budget as well. So it's a, it's a great tool for us to be able to, and see throughout, um, all of our employees. It's a very helpful tool that, that we have to use, um, you know, know to figure out agents and stuff. And it gives employees opportunity to move up in grades, um, depending on their job description and do.
So Lonnie, just as a point of clarification, because I want to just be sure that I'm understanding you, and I, this, your explanation, and I appreciate Mayor, um, turning it to Lonnie and having Lonnie, um, provide her expertise. It sounds like the pay matrix has an, an impact for all employees, which is, actually sounds like a really good thing, that there's consistency as a result. Am I understanding that accurately?
Yes, you are. Yep.
That's really helpful information. I, I thank you for that, uh, Lonnie.
You bet.
Any other questions on the 2020, 21 budget?
Nate Davis, eleven oh one, Adam. Isn't 11% wrong since the police budget comes from the general fund? Are you comparing it to all the money coming in, such as water, etc.? Isn't the police department's budget 42% of the general fund?
It is 42% of the general fund, but it's 11% of the total budget for the city, which includes streets, uh, gas tax money, all kinds of things in there. Dave?
Mayor, if you'd like, I can respond a little to that as well. A lot of the numbers that came in, um, were people that were comparing the police expenditure as a percentage of the entire, um, budget. Um, I've worked out a spreadsheet for my own balance and just to share some information. Um, sewer comes in at just under 34% of our budget. Water is just a little over 28, and I show the police at about 10.6%. So that is under a lot of the reference material that was provided to the council as well as the city, that it was about 12 to 13% was a pretty common number. So I think coming in under 11% matches that. And then that's just given, um, that's, that's the top three expenses, but I think that gives you a reference to, to work with, um, just because that is the most common number used as you compare municipalities against other municipalities.
Thank you, Dave. Any more questions on the 2020, 21 budget?
Will we need counsel in here?
No. That'll be one, once we get into the, the council session. Okay, Jael?
Thank you. Dave, can you, um, share some of those comparisons? I think that's really interesting data and information of how you saw, uh, those breakdowns comparing to other resort towns that are sort of similar size. Knowing that we're unique, however, we, it's always, it's data, it's information. What did you learn in that process?
I, I don't want to dive real deep into it because, as was referenced earlier, we got all sorts of different reference material. And most of that homework or most of that data was actually provided by a couple of the different groups that have submitted it. And, and basically from my seat, uh, what I saw was people saying, hey, we keep looking up and we see 11%, 12%, 13%, uh, 42% seems way out of whack in comparison. And, uh, just my internal SNIF test, as I looked at it, said, I don't feel like we're comparing apples to apples. And so what I did is, is take just that information and try to correlate it so it made sense. And as, as I went out and looked, it, it was generally discussed in terms of the overall budget. So I created my own spreadsheet, um, which I had intended to, to share more widely. But I just, I, I was still working on it and plugging away late last night to, to get numbers together. Um, just to try, I, my question was, um, is it, is it, is it close enough that it passes the, the SNIF test? I guess maybe one of the first things, and I don't know if this is necessarily the appropriate time to address it, but I think it may quell some questions, so I'll, I'll go ahead and do it. I'm not foolish enough to think that there's one budget that's the right budget that everybody is going to agree with. So as a member of council, what I'm looking at is, is our budget reasonable and logical? Is there anything that jumps way out of whack? In my eyes, the budget is very similar as far as priorities. Like I said, if I look at those top priorities of sewer, water, police, solid waste, those priorities are very reflective of what we've seen in the past years. So in the absence of, um, a, a referendum or, you know, we've, clearly we've got input from both sides that have different opinions, which is as I would expect it. Um, but my feeling is the budget is consistent with what the mayor has proposed before. Um, and, and I'll add that this mayor was reelected with the folks in this town knowing what his priorities were. So barring a, a, a great deviation from that, um, I, I don't have issues with the budget per se. Um, so, so like I said, I, I didn't dive deep, deep, deep in comparison. As I took the information that was provided to me and made sure that I was able to, to balance that and that it made, made sense, given those guidelines which I've outlined. Um, I do have, uh, an, an effort to make sure that the process is followed. Um, you probably picked up from my questions that I do want to make sure that I feel folks have had an opportunity to ask their questions and that they have, the city has responded to that. And if, if they feel that their questions haven't been answered, I'd really like people to, to speak up and share that. Um, I said, it doesn't mean it's going to be the answers that everybody likes, um, but, but I do want them to be answered. That is an important part of the process. And that, to me, is, is what my role as a council person is to make sure we do.
As a, as a follow-up, and Mayor and, uh, Chief, maybe you guys could provide just a little bit of, um, your expertise. Because I'm sure, Mayor, that you've looked at other cities' budgets as you've led your staff through this process. And just what have you learned that has been sort of your guidelines in the process? And then similarly to the, to the chief, um, when you're considering, you know, what's quote unquote reasonable or responsible for an ask, what are some of the measures in your profession that are used to, to determine? I think you did, um, cost per police officer is one. Is another one, for instance, number of police per community members. But just having a little bit of insight into the criteria that both of you provide in terms of leadership would be really helpful and insightful. Thank you.
Chief, do you want to give us the rundown on what you figured per officer?
So I, I don't have those figures in front of me. They were presented, um, the meeting before, uh, prior to. So what I did is one of the comparisons that I used, it's hard to compare apples to apples, like what Dave was saying. A lot of cities do their budgets differently. Some put the resort tax in their general fund as, 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 uh, or in parts of other things. So it's hard to get a percentage or a position. So what I did in Whitefish, for instance, was ask what they totally spent for their officers. And I believe, if I remember correctly, they, it comes down to they have, uh, nineteen or seventeen officers. Divided that out, per cost per officer, they were paying $165,000 per officer, per year. So dividing that out, what Redwood pays is under $100,000 per year. Uh, taking out the six thousand that was in and then comes back out, we're under that 700,000. So with seven officers, we're paying less than $100,000 per officer. Uh, we're also looking at other communities such as, uh, Yellowstone, um, uh, can't think of the, West Yellowstone, West Yellowstone. West Yellowstone uses a percentage, and their percentage overall budget was 12% for, for six officers. They, they expressed that they need seven officers, but they had six officers, and that percentage, which was expressed to me, was 12%. So that's over the 10.6%, I think that Dave came up with, or what we rounded up and said 11%. So those are some of the figures that we do. The, the cost and what we do as far as figuring for our community, because every community is different. In a resort town, you're bringing in a lot of outside people who don't maybe live here all the time, but they're still laying their heads here, they're coming through the town, which still need, which still need policing. One of the things that's very dear to me is providing 24-hour coverage seven days a week, so that if someone does need help, that help is less than two minutes away per average of our call and response time. I think that's critical. If you need help, we should be there and be able to respond compared to either being on call, which there's contractual issues on that. But being on call, you're looking at 15, 20 minutes away. Studies show that within 15, 20 minutes, it's all done. What's happened is normally going to happen, and we're there to investigate what's left over. We don't want to do that. We want to be proactive. My officers are proactive. My officers respond in a timely manner and provide their correct amount of response when they do. And I think that for our community, as your chief, that's what I'm recommending.
All right. The chief and I have gone over this several times as far as having seven officers. And we've been through, we started years ago, uh, being short several. Uh, and sometimes we had five, which brought in a ton of overtime. We also have training to think about and vacation and, and sick time for these people. And seven is, is the number for our community. I, I do agree with the chief that this is a, a, this is a community where we have a huge influx of people here for several months that, uh, add to our population and add to the people, being one of the people that we need to cover. The, you know, it's been said, well, let's just hire somebody extra for those times, and that doesn't, that doesn't work out contractually. And it, it doesn't, it doesn't fit with our department. We train our people very well here. Now, the training is quite extensive, and that is the number that we go by.
Well, I, I thank you both for that, uh, feedback. It's really helpful to hear the lens that you both look at and to help us, uh, be caught up. So thank you both.
Yes, uh, Chief has one more thing to add.
I, I just want to clarify one thing. When I say under 90, under 100,000, that's not what the officer takes home and puts in his pocket, just so that you understand. That's all-in cost. That's cost of dispatch, just cost of cars, tires, bullets, guns, equipment, uniforms. We have to figure what an officer costs the city. And so just to let you know, our officers are currently making $20.08 an hour. It comes up to roughly about $42,000 gross pay. That's not take-home pay. That's gross pay. So our officers aren't getting rich. I want you to understand that. And, uh, we do have to take care of our officers. And so I just wanted to verify, I don't want to get out there thinking that $99,000 is how an officer makes. That's not it. That's what it costs the city to have an officer.
What kind of an public comment, period? Did you have something you wanted to say now, or do you want to wait till we bring up the resolution?
I, I would like to say it right now. We all talk about the summertime when we have an influx of visitors, but we have it during the winter also. We have the skiers. 95% of them drive past my house every day. And we have skiers, we have snowboarders, we have people who come here for the winter sports activities. So we have visitors year-round, not just the summertime.
Thank you. Comments from the public?
Uh, Christian Cogswell, six twenty nineteenth Street West. Uh, given so many, many people's uneasiness with the budget, wouldn't it be prudent to give the concerned citizens a couple weeks to get their questions answered? Um, it seems like a good thing to encourage scrutiny to remain as fiscal, fiscal, conservative as possible. Uh, Jen Battles. What are the departments and council members doing to collect input regularly from the public about how they would like their tax dollars to be spent? This critical piece of public input in the formation of the draft is lacking in the budget timeline flow chart, especially given that the tax resort survey results don't seem to reflect the tax resort budget for this year. And given that, given that you aren't taking petition signatures into account as per your legal advice. Nate Davis, none of the others can be used for items in the general fund. Where's the money going that it's supposed to be used for the pool fund? Water and sewer are fees for service. They can only collect enough money to cover the expenses in water and sewer. Isn't it just ingenious to lump it into, lump it in as the budget? I concur with Christine Cogswell. That was amazing.
You know, and, and as I talked about, as far as our timeline, you know, these documents have been out a long period of time. I suggest if you have, uh, input, talk to your, say, council person, as I said at the beginning. Uh, I, hopefully that I, and I think that we answered a lot of Jen's questions there. As far as our, looking at our water and sewer, uh, it does, it does more than just cover expenses. Uh, we're at the point right now where we're actually going to pay off one sewer loan. And once again, uh, two sewer loans, and we're going to refinance, uh, two sewer loans. and once again, two sewer loans, and we're going to refinance two sewer loans, to change that interest rate and save the city money. Everything that is in front of us, as far as the budget, is the city budget, and that includes a lot of that. What else did I miss that Nate said?
I think, I think it's a written.
Okay. I think there was a question on the pool, the finances of the pool.
They're going to use.
So, the money that's supposed to be used for the pool, that was coming out of resort tax, which resort tax is, is going, we're forecasting that that's going to be short this year. We have the engineering done, that was paid for through the resort tax last year, so that, that report is available here at City Hall. So when funds become available to get the pool project started, that is going to come out as a resort tax.
JL, going forward, do you have ideas of ways you can imagine being able to get more public input in terms of goals sooner?
I'll take them out 24/7. I mean, I'll, yeah, like I say, please, please use your council reps, they're, they're the ones that are representing you. Like I say, we're more than happy to answer those questions here at City Hall, but it's going to take you a long period of time, because we all have other duties that we, that we are performing at that time. Your council reps, they go ahead and collect that data, and come in and get it from, from us, or hopefully, like Dave has his own spreadsheet, he has an opportunity to just go ahead and tell you what it is.
Bill Barnes, Fred Barnes, 6th Stop Plan. I came to this meeting tonight because I was the recipient of the petition that was circulated. To me, you answered the questions. I didn't have a problem with the budget at all, but I do want to have in-depth input within CBAB. For when you let me, when I, when I, when will I be able to make a statement on that?
Probably go through Tom, he's your councilperson.
I've talked to him, okay? I've talked to both of them. The way to report our complaint, have you, both my councilpeople. Sure, I didn't even use you.
I know. They're working really closely, Bill. Thank you. About five minutes left. Any more comments?
Nate Davis, I appreciate the time given to my questions. Thank you. JL, are there funds, for instance, to do a community survey, maybe update the 2017 survey?
We could look at that. It's not, the funds aren't going to be there for, in the general fund. We'll definitely have a discussion with Chief Wells, and we can talk about that.
Listen, yay, that would be great.
Five more minutes for questions about the budget, 2020, 2021. Council will have an opportunity to discuss when the resolution is brought forward, so that's a good time for me to bring up your questions, Robbie. Are you raising your hand, or swatting flies?
Why?
Seems that everybody's satisfied? Everybody's satisfied? We'll go ahead and close the public meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Can we leave it on?
Okay. Let's get it stretched a little bit, and then we'll start the other meeting. With the work session for August 25th, 2020, we are going to take roll call, because we do have action items on the agenda tonight, so, sorry. Should we do the flash?
I'm going to lay it to you.
Let's do the flash. Alex, or you can lay this.
No.
Thank you for reminding.
Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Carson?
Here.
Hoffman? Hoffman?
Micah, are you out there?
I think we're a minute ago.
Lyman?
Here.
Mayhan?
Here.
Lemur?
Here.
Westwood?
Here.
We had Micah on there for a while, I don't know where he's at.
He may not have heard you, he may not have heard you call, maybe he's back to order, I don't.
Okay.
That would be. It says, talking, calling 9. That's us, so that's because we're hooked up to the phone, too. I don't know who caller 8 is. There might be one.
Micah was on there, and we're giving him some time to get back to the meeting here.
Hey, he said he's here, he can hear us. He needs to say he's here. Okay. Tell him he needs to stay there.
Do you want to have him just call in?
He is calling.
Yeah.
He must be calling. He's calling on someone's cell phone? Yeah, he must be, and I just asked him, could he state that he's here, that nobody can read. Oh, Lonnie, can you scroll down, like, what other, or can you say other callers? On that one?
For public disclosure, I have tested him to let him know we're calling him and not hearing a response.
Thank you.
There's 849. 49. I don't know if he's caller 8. He says, I am present, I can hear everything being said. Can you call your phone and just talk to your phone?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to call him up on the phone.
That one.
He's going to be on the phone.
Are you there, Micah?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We can, finally. I'm going to lay the phone up here, and just, just stay on the phone, okay?
Perfect.
All right. Okay, so since we did roll call.
Sorry, I apologize for my technological ignorance.
It's okay. So just for record, I called, I did roll call, so Hoffman?
Here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, okay, we got that covered. First thing on the agenda is Resolution 3551, adoption of the 2020, 2021 budget.
Move to approve Resolution 3551 to adopt the 2020, 2021 budget as presented.
Comments from the council?
Yes. Comments are, part of the reason I was late for the meeting, is I was on the phone with several people who are desperately wanting to know, they just don't feel they have a good handle on the budget. I don't know why, I mean, it's public knowledge, it should be public knowledge, but there are several, there's one particular issue that came up, more than once, several times as a matter of fact, and it had to do with the police budget, and it had to do with the idea that police officers should be held accountable if they have a disciplinary action that shouldn't be just automatically waived after 18 months. And the suggestion we made, and I personally think it's a good one, that if it gets to that point, that the council should also be part of that decision process.
So, tell me how this affects the budget?
Well, the budget, I mean, we, we went through the whole budget with the union and so on, and that was part of the union contract, by the union, am I right in that?
So we don't have the contract, the contract isn't done yet, the negotiations are still continuing.
Right, so we have the time to amend that as necessary.
You do.
Okay, then I'm satisfied, isn't it?
Thank you. Rob, do you have something?
You know, it just keeps coming up, and it's on, that was another petition, and I realized I can't stop this tonight. It's, per population, the town had 2,100, and glory bringing up the fact that we have an influx of tourists, summer and winter, I'm trying to mess with that, but, okay, another, there's a big concern that the police can't live in town, and somebody brought up the fact that housing in other little towns with that kind of situation have been set up. You know, it's like a response, if something's going on, I don't know how, and I heard just this morning that one of the sheriff's department, sheriff's deputies, are we hiring another police officer?
We're always stopped.
Somebody said that Jeremy Nybauer and an officer from Laurel were up for another position. I heard that this morning, is that?
Those are county.
That's county.
That's county deputy?
Yeah.
That's not.
So it wasn't the police department?
No, that's the county sheriff.
Okay. Okay. Who else? That was it on the police department, somebody brought up the fact that was what you emailed us after the last budget meeting, an update on some of the information. One of the things was, we have a water superintendent is who that?
A water super is?
Eric.
Eric.
He said on there that he makes a hundred thousand.
No, no.
I was, I was told this.
I guess I would take his position.
And Robbie, you need to realize, too, within those salaries, the, so that was last year, so that was Bruce's wages, that's Bruce. He had been here for over 30 years.
And that was what he made.
Yeah, so our, our new water superintendent, we budgeted $90,000, but you have to take into consideration, that includes insurance, that's workers' comp, that, that's retirement, those are all figured into that number. That's not his take-home.
That's not what he takes home.
That's not what he takes home.
Same thing with the police.
Exactly.
$100,000 down to $40,000.
But that, that, that cost is what the city, it's the city's cost, but that's not total take-home for that employee, so just wanted to clarify.
It's what it costs the city to hire somebody to do that job, and get all the benefits that are associated with it.
And you would be the Public Works Director, we had you at $46,800.
And that's a portion. He is split up, whereas the water superintendent is strictly paid out of the water fund, so, yeah.
Jim gets paid out of a lot of different funds that he manages.
Yep.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Micah.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, over the last couple weeks, as we've been discussing the budget, and specifically the police budget, something that I had not heard brought up or talked about, and maybe it's just because of the industry that I work in, but like it or not, good or bad, this town is growing, and I guess we should really think about that going forward when we debate whether we should have seven officers, five officers, eight officers. We just, we should just consider the fact that our town is growing, and we are going to need our police force, and possibly the need to consider increasing their budget going forward.
Thank you, Micah.
I think Dave's got a question, too.
Dave, do you have a question?
I do, a few questions. The first one is for Lonnie, just a clarification, there is a line item in the budget, the enterprise funds for CDB, can you clarify for me what that is? I forgot, I'm sorry.
Is it under salaries?
I believe it is under salaries, it's between council and clerk and treasurer.
Community Development Director, oh, sorry, I should have maybe spelled that out a little bit.
That's a long one to spell.
It is a long one to spell. That would be James.
Thank, thank you. I had a follow-up question for Chief Wells, based on some of the earlier public input. There was a question about the possibility of increasing our training budget. If I read that properly, our current training budget is $5,000. I'm curious if he has a number of what he thinks he would like to see additional in training, now's, now's the time to ask for it, or forever hold your peace.
We actually have $8,000, sorry. So it is split up between Lexis pole, where it says policy and training, so he has a total of $8,000, just to clarify that, for total training.
Thank you for that clarification. Question for the chief, Dan.
Dave, thank you so much for thinking that way. Our officers want training, and we want to be very professional, we want to have the skills to do our job properly. But again, knowing that we have budget issues, and that we're trying to be as thrifty as we can, and still provide great training, like you said, with the program that I provided, they will get as much training as they want on their off time. So in other words, if they're working midnights and it gets slow, they can come in and they can log in on Police One Academy, and they can actually take some training, and they can, they can pause it, and when they get more time, they can come back to it, they don't miss that block of training. And so it's a way of providing good quality training, under a very efficient way of doing it, while eliminating the cost of travel, the cost of motels, the cost of the fees for school. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to eliminate that, because there's very valuable things as far as resourcing and getting together with other police officers, that's important for us to do. But I'm trying to eliminate as much as I can, will provide the maximum amount of training for our officers, and I feel that this is a way that we can do it, and at least we're going to go this way this year. And I'm satisfied with where my budget is, I appreciate you asking for that, but I think that we can accomplish what we need to accomplish with the funds that I've asked for, and the city has provided. Again, if we feel that we need more next year, we'll absolutely budget it, and we will go through this process, and I'll try and articulate the need for it. Again, I can't, I can't say enough, our officers have to be trained, I believe in training, and I want them to be as educated and as well-prepared to deal with our citizens in a very professional way, and that's our goal here, to place harmony for the city of Redwood.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I know I'm but one member of council, I do think that 8,000 is a, is a little low. I know that historically you've returned extra funds and been able to operate under budget. I guess I'll just offer my two cents, that I do think it's one of those things that you get a double bonus for. I think it shows value to officers, they know they're valued, and it helps retain good talent, and I think we've heard that the community will feel better knowing that we're, we're spending time and effort there, so. Thank you. I know I'm but one member of council. I do think that eight thousand is a little low. I know that historically you've returned extra funds and been able to operate under budget. I guess I'll just offer my two cents that I do think it's one of those things that you get a double bonus for. I think it shows value to officers, they know they're valued and it helps retain good talent. And I think we've heard that the community will feel better knowing that we're spending time and effort there, so. I for one will not be complaining if you come back and let us know that you've rearranged your budget a little or if you ask for additional in the future. Next question is for James regarding parks. Is James there? I apologize, I can't help from my camera.
He is.
I'm here.
Yeah.
James, I know there's been several discussions going on about redoing trash cans along Main Street. And last I saw, it was going to be a two-part proposal where we were going to repair the ones that were there that are in public view, that everybody is seeing, all our visitors are seeing, which seemed to me to be right in line with the resort tax expenditures. And there was originally just refurbishing the existing ones, and then there was also adding some additional cans. Is at least part of that addressed in this budget and can we expect to see that done in the next year? Or do we need to make a change to in order to refurbish those trash cans?
Thanks, Dave. Unfortunately, Lonnie was off most of last week and I took off Friday, and it's something I did not discuss with her before the meeting. But I had talked to the mayor about it and he felt that there is probably funds that we can use for the refurbishing. So I don't know if that's a question, I have a question right now, but we were looking at about two thousand, if I remember right, to refurbish the existing garbage cans on Broadway Avenue.
So we increased the Parks Board budget up to thirty thousand? I mean, it could come out of there, I don't know if that's one of their projects or what.
It's not, and that was one of my responses was that, well, if we did not have the funds for it, the Parks Board could choose to fund it. But that's not anything that they've discussed at this point, so. They have the priorities that they've submitted that they'd like to deal and obviously, you don't want to be presumptuous that they should take the kind of.
Well, and we did, in the budget, there is thirteen thousand, and that includes the dumpsters and, you know, that was the ballpark, so I don't see why it couldn't be paid out this year.
Okay. I think we have an opportunity to do that, and at least get the refurbishment.
Yeah.
And I guess my question was, like I said, I don't want to do anything that even approaches managing or micromanaging any of the department heads. But that is something that I've heard expressed that I think would be good for us to do, and I just want to make sure that we have the funds to do that, and if we need to allocate more, now is the time to do that.
I want to mention too, with the CARES Act, we have been reimbursed. So that money is there, the council is going to, here in the near future, when we can find out for sure what we can spend those monies on as far as like police training, because a lot of the reimbursement was for police officers' time and overtime. So if it's allowable, you know, to up, you know, the chief's training for his guys and stuff, I mean, but it'll be, you know, come to council as far as decision is where that CARES Act reimbursement fund will be spent and stuff, we'll get all the logistics to it, so. And on that too, I got word today on the new website that that is, it's not a guarantee, but we are going to submit the fee for creating the new website for reimbursement. She said it's a very reasonable request and she just can't guarantee we will get reimbursed, but I am going to submit that into next month. So just to let everybody know on that as well.
Thank you. And my last comment having to do with the budget in general and specifically just to share my thoughts with other council members. I stated earlier that I don't think there's any such thing as the perfect budget that everybody is going to agree with. And I don't have any concerns with the budget that's been placed before us. I do think part of the question that's before me is, and all of us, is do we feel that inadequate time has been given to respond and answer to the public questions? We do have a timeline, the budget does need to be passed by the first Thursday following the first Tuesday of September, which basically means Thursday, that's not the first or second. And the reality is, we do have the time, we could come together next week if we felt we wanted to allow just an additional week to have public receive answers to their questions if they don't feel. And I think the question is, do we feel that we've given them that response? I would like, if we do extend it, that we limit that input to any questions that were received prior to last Friday. I do think there's a process, I do think we've made that information available to people. And I think that we have to work that process and call a deadline and work with it. It can't be new questions, new questions continually coming up. And so I guess as I'm listening to council discussion, my question is, do we need to, do we need just a little bit more time to respond to unanswered questions? Or does council feel that we've adequately responded to questions raised by the public? That's all for me, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Rob?
If we have the time for one more chance, that was the petition I brought in tonight was there were still concerns that hadn't been answered. And I handed, you've got that to look over? I would like to see one more meeting.
Well, where we're sitting right now, we've had kind of brought to the table and it's been seconded. That's where we're at right now.
And we had to have a meeting.
Right.
I mean, but council, three.
Any other comments from the table?
And if people, Mayor, may I speak?
Yes.
If people think that their question has not been adequately answered, contact their council representative, explain what they think and get an answer.
That's what they needed. Yeah, I'd like, Mayor?
Yes.
Well, this is, this is, as I said, I came in here late because I was on the phone with people's last-minute concerns about the budget. You know, and I don't know what to say after you say, well, the budget's on, you know, it's available to be seen, we talked and talked and talked about it. But somebody said, well, I was out of town, I just got back and looking at it and so on and so on. But it's more than one or two people, it's several who would, I sort of think that if we were able to do that within reason, it would take some of the pressure off the town, but, you know, people would say, okay, we're going to give another week, and so if you've got problems, if you've got questions, let's hear them. We can't do it forever, but.
You know, July seventh, I mean, we're going back there to July seventh when the and look where we're sitting at right now, at the end of August. You know, I I can't, I can't work around other people's vacations. That's kind of where I'm at here. We worked very hard on this since January or February sixth, when we had the first one, and and I'm sorry, you know, we had the presentation, the public was welcome, we had another presentation, the public was welcome, we had another one and the public was welcome. We had our public hearing here now and I just don't know what else we can do. I mean, yeah, we can start the budget process for next year tomorrow, and I don't know that we're going to have everybody, so, Robbie.
What I kept hearing over and over is the budget meetings would be put on some other, some other day. And the time of day would be kind of fluctuating around once they finally heard about it or saw which made it very hard, you know, people are kind of tuned in to the second Tuesday, second, fourth Tuesday of every month, they expect city hall things going on, probably not realizing the time it takes to deal with the budget. That's what I would hear people saying. And some of the things that they were way concerned about has been voiced over and over and over again. And would like before the budget gets passed, you know, I have been asked to vote against it if some of the things don't don't change, that they aren't happy with. And I know that's, and I'm just in one little ward, one of the, one ward in town, and that's just what kind of like a rock, between a rock and a hard place type of situation.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
So the Department of Revenue needs the mills, they need the taxes. So the way the mills are set, so the money is not going to change. If the council wants to discuss the stuff within the budget, you know, but tonight would be nice to approve the mills, so that resolution is setting the mills for those funds that go to the Department of Revenue, so that then that goes to the counties to be put onto the taxes. And that's what the deadline is for. You guys are, you know, have the resolution in front of you that sets those mills, that's what this resolution does. As far the budget itself, you know, if there are concerns within those ones, those can always be discussed, addressed.
It's not curt and stumm type of thing, it's flexible.
You know, the motion can be to approve the resolution with the stipulation that you guys will be looking, you know, at the entirety of, and if it's just the general funds and, you know, state that, you know, if there's still questions within there. It might, it's just a suggestion, but to pass the resolution will set the mills, because those are not changing. The mills are not going to change.
Okay.
Whether they have a comment or not, those mills, it is what it is, I mean, we can't change the mills. So just throwing that out there.
And so this is just a step in the right direction to continue the process.
I like that explanation, that if we're still flexible.
Yeah, the council will still need to, you know, overall approve that final budget, but tonight would be to approve the resolution, you know, which sets the amounts.
If that's the case, I'd like to move that we approve.
Yeah.
You have a motion in a second already?
Yeah, and any other comments from the table?
No, sir.
We've had a public hearing on it and we've heard them out. Let's roll call.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Mahan?
Yes.
Yes.
Westwood?
I'm going to go with no.
Okay. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to resolution three, five, five, two. Call for sale of sewer bonds, this is an action item. Who would like to speak for it? Lonnie?
Do you want to do a motion before?
Yeah, move to approve, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Call for sale for sewer bonds.
Second.
Second.
You want to explain this?
Yeah, so this is just like what we did for the refinancing of our water bonds, this is just for our two USDA sewer bonds that we will put together and refinance, so this resolution is calling for the sale, so it allows us to post to receive bids. And then the mayor and I will go over those bids on the fifteenth of September with bond counsel and our AMCO advisors. And then we will bring to council on September twenty-second, we will bring forth another resolution to have council approval for the bid, awarding the bid to whoever puts it in. So it's just kind of a formality to get the ball rolling again, to get these refinancing done. It, I had a conference call, well, Jim and I had a conference call to get our our ratings that is put out there along with the POS, which I can't remember what POS is. Not the bad one though, if you're thinking that way, but so our rating came back really good, so that will go out with the call of the sale for the bids. And then talking with Brian with AMCO, it, interest rates are really good right now, so he's shooting for under two percent for those coming back, so which is really good. So that's, that's pretty much in a nutshell what the, this resolution is for. So, but there'll be more stuff coming forward for council to approve as well.
Comments from the table?
Now is the right time to do this.
Well, it is, very good.
Under two percent. Now's the right time to do it, yeah, sure is.
Any more comments from the table? Comments from the public? Roll call.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Mahan?
Yes.
Weemer?
Yes.
Westwood?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our action items, we'll move on to the future pool plans for discussion. Judith, do you want to kind of fill everybody in, or I know you guys came in and looked at the plans, the final engineering. Tom, you wanted this up for discussion, did you want to head it up?
Well, I just, I would actually like Judith to present what, where she is with this, because she's put it in the ramrod on this thing. There were some issues associated with it, but in general, I'm all for it.
Yes, and if you'd state your name and your residence.
Judith Gregory, three Westport Drive. Al Blumer and I reviewed Brent Lloyd's engineering plan. We had a design issue with it. I haven't spoken to Brent about it, but they're building a new family dressing room. And that dressing room has no access to the pool. Outside from that, and Al and I both talked to Brent about this, but it seems to me it wasn't worth the money to build it if it didn't have access to the pool itself. I think it's a huge desire in our community for a pool for our kids. And right now, I think if we have it by 2022, we're going to be lucky. So when we came out of that building, we, meeting, we asked that we could form a community committee like we did for the resort tax that would spearhead primarily community approval and fundraising. I personally would like to see this funded outside of the city bond issue or taxes. And I think with a concerted effort in a community committee that we could do that. We have to have the endorsement of the city council. That yes, the city council wants the pool and will do everything it can to provide for the pool. Will create this committee and empower the committee to talk about the financing of the pool. And so that's what, what we would request. And we'd have representatives from the business community and the parent community and and from the city council on that.
Good.
Anyway, the number is quite high.
Yes.
And the other thing that we would like to have is create an endowment to support the pool. So that would be another million dollars on top of the price tags that's in the engineering.
All right, thank you. That's a great idea.
But we think we can do it.
All right.
But we need to go to donors and say the council is totally behind this.
Mm-hmm, yes. James, I guess we need to work on that.
Sure.
Yeah, I had some other thoughts on that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, you know, if we can put together a a pool committee that they would not only look at the funding options, which would include any possible combinations of donations, possible resort tax or worst-case scenario, a pool district to pay for the bricks and mortar. Just for the construction of the pool, we're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars a year for twenty years. With the O and M on top of that, we can expect the annual cost to be over a hundred and fifty thousand a year for twenty years. So I know with the resort tax committee, there was a lot of discussion about the pool and hoping to free up some money for resort tax. I know the council thought about that as well. But obviously, a hundred and fifty grand right now would be about twenty percent of resort tax, which is pretty expensive, so. I also think the committee could do such things as So I also think the committee could do such things as make recommendations on the amenities of the pool. There's all, as Judith said, kind of issues with the one restroom. But there's a lot of things in the amenities list that perhaps are not needed, or perhaps more amenities could be added if enough money was raised. You know, as an example, there's pricing in that construction loan for wall sumps for a future water slide, but not the actual water slide. So potentially, maybe the sumps aren't added or potentially the water slide is added. But I think if we do get a committee that can get together, look at funding options, look at what amenities we can do, then, and make a recommendation to the city council, have city council and hopefully Parks Board representation as well, that perhaps we could make a smooth process, get it to council, and get some sort of commitment from the city council. And we've seen with the skate park and the soccer field, that the people doing fundraising for those types of infrastructure projects need a commitment from the city. And so I think getting that committee put together would be the best route on trying to build a consent, consent system, have them pull public meetings to get my public input.
Okay.
But I'd say the $100,000 assumes 100% bond financing.
Correct.
For the pool, which we hope we don't have to come to.
Any other comments on pool?
We need a pool.
I think we all agree. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we all agree with that. No question about it.
Let's move on to the energy performance contracting.
Do we have a commitment to creating?
James and I will get together and we'll get on it. Yes, we will. Energy performance contracting. Neil was going to be here.
He's on.
All right.
Yep.
It's yours.
Great, thanks. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. So the energy performance contracting is something that was started out by Robin. But as I'm sure you're all aware right now, the Energy Core Program was not continued in Montana. So the sustainability initiatives have, have been put on, into, into my job area. So I'm carrying on the energy performance contracting. I know you guys probably heard a little bit about this from Robin. So the idea is we look at the city in a more, in the city facilities in a kind of holistic manner. We've had some audits done over the last few years. One was done by Northwest Energy back in 2016, and that gave us some idea what some of the areas are that we can save some money in energy efficiency. And now this is looking at it from a, from a bigger, at a bigger scale and looking at getting an energy service provider to come in and do an investment grade audit, to look at the city's facilities, what investments could be made. And then the real advantage of looking at it this way is we're talking about long-term investments. So it could be 10, 15, 20 years. And that allows us to get some of the savings that we might not have when we're looking at the low hanging fruit, like the LED retrofits and those things that are kind of quick to identify. So this is one way wrapping it into a bigger contract where we can get those long-term savings and really get those energy performance con, energy performance projects done that all save the money for the city in the long term. I did submit to the council a timeline for what has been going on so far. So I'll just share my screen if you want to look at this. I think you guys all have this, but for anyone who doesn't have it in front of them. So this work to date was mostly done by Robin, all done by Robin, I suppose. And then in mid-August, we received RFPs from Imaresco and McKinstry. And the next step is to establish a selection committee for looking at those proposals that we received. And so that'll be composed of some city staff members, Jim Bushnell will need his input, the mayor, Lonnie, and myself. And then we will have other department heads who are interested in being part of the process. And then hopefully a member of the sustainability board. Not, not quite sure who that will be yet. I'll be reaching out to people to see who would like to take part on that committee. And any members of the council that are interested in learning more about this and being part of this. You know, it might be a little bit difficult, since I know you all have obligations that you have to deal with. We may have some meetings with our energies, or potential energy service providers during the day. But if anybody is interested, it'd be great to bring you into the fold. So yeah, the next step is to go through the, with the, with the selection committee, rank the proposals, and then talk to whoever we choose about getting an investment grade audit done and the scope of the project and how much we'd like to do. So with that, we're aiming for a recommendation to the council going in September 22nd. So we're hoping to have these interviews done in the next couple of weeks and then a vote for action on that to move forward by October 13th. Yeah, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, since I'm on the sustainability board, should I not be on this call for this committee also?
I think that would, yeah.
Okay. I'm willing to do that, Neil, if it's all right with you.
Yeah, that's great.
I'd like to have a council person, and then I, I think that we still need someone else from sustainability also.
Yeah.
Comments from the public? Thank you, Neil.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Neil.
Move to the last thing is the public comment period. So we're open for public comments. Bill Barnes.
Yeah. Bill Barnes, six step plan. I thank you for your effort because this has been the favorite course for us, and I'm with that. And I've been able to answer a few questions I had based, based on all the information I've received, trying to get more information than from the petition on. And I thank for, I thank you for your yes votes.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you for being here tonight, Bill.
Yes. Public comment period. So what do you think, guys? Call it?
So let me just add one question. We are going to then move the action on the budget, budget itself.
So the budget expenditures, what you guys will discuss?
Next week.
Well, I would think, can you guys do it at the next council meeting? I mean, we can put that on the agenda. That would be September 8th.
Yeah, I'm not going to be around.
And that gives everybody plenty of time to think about it.
But for clarification, Dave had brought this up when he was talking about that. So is it questions between last Friday true today that the council still needs? Is that what we're, is that what you meant, Dave? I just wanted to clarify.
My, my input was to put a deadline on it so that it wasn't a continually open process. I just wanted to make sure that we had answered all of the questions received prior to last Friday. So that was, that was when this went on the agenda. So if just, I just wanted to address questions. And again, my goal was just to, to make sure that we didn't have any of the public feeling like they hadn't been heard or had a chance to get their questions answered. My, my issue is not with the budget itself.
So we could put that on the agenda on the 8th for council to do that and prove expenditures. I mean, they approved the resolution that sets the mills. I mean, the money is done.
I do, I do think that we need to set some kind of a line on that.
Well, yeah, as far as.
Once we do the agenda, and then if we get more after that, then, I mean.
Well, like Dave said, prior to.
Okay.
Last Friday. Any questions that were received prior to last Friday?
I'm good with that.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Even though.
So questions that were received prior to last Friday?
Prior to last Friday, which is what we want to.
Okay.
Is that what will be answered?
Yes.
So basically, the questions you already answered, wait until you'll answer again?
You probably just need some clarification on which one was which one, and I'm more than happy to do that.
And we can post those, the answers?
Yeah, we can post those. They're all public knowledge.
Yes.
Very good. Any other comments? Public comments going once, going twice?
Adjourned.
Were adjourned. Thank you.